Can you hear me, Josh?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great. What do you hear from Jillian?
I haven't heard much from her. I know she's uh out of town, so.
Yeah, some family stuff, I guess. Meetings.
Yeah, holiday season.
Holiday stuff, yeah. How about you? You going out of town or?
No, I'm staying here. Take some time in December. Go visit some family. Let's see.
Hi, Josh.
Hello, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm doing great, thank you.
I'm gonna run off for one minute and I will be right back, but I'm here. Okay?
Okay.
I need to be moved over as a panelist to join the meeting.
Josh or Tim is Dave trying to speak. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, David.
Well, I had to upload a new Zoom that doesn't have any of the normal controls, so I don't know where my video is. I can't, again, it's kinda stupid. It's a new update with all sorts of new user interface, so. I don't, can you see me?
No, I can't see you, but I can hear you.
I'll, I'll listen in and participate, but can't do any more than what I've done right now, so I will mute unless I have something to say. Thanks, Josh, for joining us this evening.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, I've got a kind of funny interface, too. I can see myself in a separate video or a separate window.
Can you, can you hear me? This is Judith.
Yes, I can.
I can see Josh and that's all I can see.
Same here.
You're gonna have to be very entertaining, Josh.
That's right, no pressure.
Mute my videos. Let me try. No, I don't know.
Yes, it's just interesting. I have no list of participants. No video feed except Josh. Just don't you love those engineers who love to tinker with things? It worked, it worked too well. Had to change it.
But this, this is Judith again. This does happen when we aren't moved over from guest to panelist.
Um, that's
And that's, that's an internal thing that has to be done on your, Josh's end.
How do I do that? I don't know.
That's a good question because in the past Jillian had, you know, Jillian did something on her end and moved us all over as panelists. And then we'll, then we'll appear, but I don't know how, maybe Tim knows, but I don't know what you guys do on your end. Because I'm not able to do it on my end.
No. Well, let's see. I don't think, there you go.
There.
You've got multiple humans.
Well, I, I just see Josh. I don't see anybody else.
That's all I can see too. Well, I can see you and Josh.
Yeah.
Something special about you, Judy.
That's right, Judy. Because she's probably a panelist. Personally. So, I don't know if that helps you, Josh, on your end.
Let me try.
Join as panelist. I just gotta
That's, and we're supposed to be participants, right?
Or participants or panelists or whatever, whatever you call us on your end, yeah.
There you go. You just got, you got me in there somehow. Continue. You cannot move the video while somebody
Nope.
Oh, I've got my hand raised. I'll get rid of that.
Yes, okay. I'm, I'm being asked to join as a panelist. Okay.
Then.
There you are. Okay, now I've got Tim.
Dave Conley. Momentarily was available.
But Josh, you are more adept than I am. My compliments to you.
Yeah, same here.
I'm trying to figure this out myself.
Well, it's a good sign you don't panic. A lot of people yell and run out of the room, so. Hey. Like an apparition, apparition.
I'm glad Judith can explain it because now I have the various controls over my video, my audio. Can see the number of participants. Very interesting, okay?
Yeah, it's magic.
It is kinda magic, isn't it? Let's see what times are getting to be.
6:04 is what I've got.
Yeah, I think we're gonna wait a little bit.
Tim, can you give us a knee update? Continuing. An update on how your knee is doing.
No, thanks. My knee is amazing. It really is. I mean, it's been you know, the pain has been never higher than seven.
Wow.
Scale from zero to 10, one to 10. From day one. Of course, I had some of the best drugs in the world, but
The spares sold for a handsome profit.
Besides, you're making it very comfortable. It also made me very, very stupid. Which I enjoyed. But it wasn't particularly good for working conditions, you know. No, no, it's been amazing, really. I can't say enough about that. The Grand View Facility for this. And the robot who I never met, I'm kind of disappointed in that, but Good. Yeah.
I have a movie for everybody. If you haven't seen it, it's a must-see. And I just have to tell you because otherwise I'll forget. And it's called The Burial. And it stars Tommy Lee Jones, and if you have not seen this movie, do not miss it.
And I think I have seen that. That's an oldie.
Priceless, yeah. Well, I don't know. It sure is, it has a lot of great messages. But I highly recommend it, everybody, especially if you wanna smile.
And just one more time, Judy, the barrier?
The burial.
Burial, okay, thank you, okay.
It's just, if you want, if you wanna be happy. Instead of gross. It's a good movie.
Oh, that's a nice recommendation.
Well, if you saw it, yeah.
We shall see. Well, come on. I'm gonna start
Is everybody on holiday this week or something?
Where is everybody? The schools are out.
They might believe they are. I'm hopefully gonna shatter their dreams. Let's start with
Oh, what happened?
We don't have a quorum, do we? Can't vote.
Just got kicked out.
Let's see, I'll try Robin. Let's see, Cheryl, David, Robin, TJ is usually hopeless, but Andrea.
Andrea's not here.
It's dependable. Well done.
Is there any point in having discussions when we have so few members?
Well, we can't we can't vote on anything. We have some nice pictures to look at.
From the hike?
Actually, from a number of the projects that we're finishing up. Actually getting things done little by little here. I did sit through the multimedia meeting just to look over the minutes that were made and to make some changes and all that kinda stuff. It was kinda interesting sitting through that, you know, the one with Kendrae and his group, the Friends of Ruxton Canyon. And all that, that was, that was interesting. Sit through, I think we comported ourselves better than I thought we did at the time.
Was that at the time?
I was kinda rattled being there in that format.
Oh, you mean you watched the actual video of the meeting?
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, I found it
You did well. You didn't believe it.
I found it uncomfortable shooting my head around every which way to try to figure out if it was blocking and all that kinda stuff. I commend the people that do that every day. It's a little disorienting. Boy, I wish we could get we only need one more.
Cheryl, Cheryl, Cheryl an alternate? Yeah. She, she comes on pretty stoked. Maybe they're just all gone for the holiday. Well, I have a question. I have a couple. Can we just ask questions?
Okay.
We, I don't think we can vote on anything, but one is I wanted to know if there's been any movement on the Rose property because I have got to tell you, after I listened to those two women at the last meeting, I'm having huge reservations about this project.
You're having what?
Huge reservations about this project.
I am too, so good. We're gonna, we're gonna deal with that tonight. And I don't really think we were gonna vote on anything with that. I just wanted to put it out there, just like you are, Judy. That having listened to them, I, I think maybe, what are you thinking?
Well, what I'm thinking is we have a piece of property that's pretty steep. And having hiked it, I think its potential is limited. And I think we have competing interests with cyclists and hikers and people saying this is a safe place for kids to be. I'm not all that sure about that trail, even if we got the juggernaut widened, even if we got that. And on top of that, the topics they brought up really, really impacted me. The idea of fire danger and its inaccessibility and its easiness to disappear mean homeless can get up there and hide, which of course was evident on the first hike that we did it, because there were I don't know, five or six abandoned homeless camps when we first, first hiked it. That first time with Shannon and I and TJ. And I think they had many good points. I really did. And I would be, if I was a parent with kids and someone said, yeah, you know, and go ahead, let them go down there by themselves. I don't think I would do that. And on top of that, the idea that the, the trail itself, the proposed trail, goes nowhere when it gets to the top. It's something we didn't really think about when we got all excited about getting it. I can see the fact you could take it down and then go across to the creek walk and that's yada yada, that's great. But and I'm really concerned about the bicycle issue. I think I think that's pretty weird and crazy.
Well, how about this, Judy and everybody else, both Judas and my thought was that we do what one of the ladies said, suggested, that we're we're putting the wrong things first. And that we go ahead and do the community outreach that we plan to do anyway. And let's just get that started. And see what people think. I don't think there's a chance in hell that we're going to build a multi-use trail down there if everybody in the community is against it. I don't know why we would. There's, it's not like that connects something to, to a trail that we need or want. It's a pretty place, that's what it is. And if it's a pretty place that causes trouble, that might not be worth it. And the fact that it appears in the post-plan is a sign from God that we have to get it done.
Well, we don't have to necessarily hurry the process.
Pardon me?
We don't necessarily have to hurry the process either.
No, we don't. There is no
Say, look
Because Larry Rose certainly is in a hurry.
Okay, maybe that's a good thing.
He's pleasant every time I talk to him. And he says the same thing. Yeah, I gotta get down there and talk to planning. Okay, Larry, talk to you next time.
But I, I think we should go ahead with the outreach because I think that will give us feedback.
There's one other piece of this puzzle, too, and God, I don't know how long it's been now. It was before, before our previous engineer, city engineer, left us. And I just lost his name right off the top of my head.
Dolgubannick?
Dolgubannick. I talked to him, like I said, well over a year ago. And asked him about doing a lining the the road.
Crystal Hills Boulevard?
Crystal Hills Boulevard. From up there at the top where it kinda leaves off into that curve down to the bridge. And lining just the west side of that with a five or six, five, six, seven, eight foot wide slow pokes lane for pedestrians and for uphill bicyclists. And I also talked to, who's our director now of of mobility?
Juan Alvarez?
Juan Alvarez. I met him and three of his employees down there and asked them about that. Juan thought it was a great idea. And his employee that did the painting and stuff like that, she thought that was a good idea. And I thought we were on the, on the way to doing that because we need that anyway for, for road bikes. We need something lined We need something lined down there for road bikes going up there. I've gone up there several times at a road bike and, yeah, it'd be nice to have something that, uh, kept the cars away from you. That it's terrifying or anything, but, uh, so I thought that was kind of ready to go. And then all of a sudden, when, when Doll went away, a whole concept of that went away. And it has never gone back and people keep telling me it's still on the list. But I think that's something that we should bring up to the community. It's a perfectly legitimate rail technique to do on-road trails. And that's what we would be doing on there. And it would give us a smooth, uh, mountain bike, uh, road bike trails and a safe pedestrian trail. All the way and it's, it's almost no distance, uh, greater than the trail that we would have from the Bilbauer Park down to where it would, it would take off. The trail from, uh, Bilbauer Park down to, uh, where it comes out on, on the Crystal Hills Boulevard is just a little over point four miles. The road from, um, Bilbauer Park down to that point is point seven miles. And that point four miles on Bilbauer Park from Bilbauer Park is as the crow flies. And there's no way in hell that any trail down there is going to be as the crow flies. It's going to be point five, point six mile, something like that. So we're, we're not losing any distance at all. Um, and I think that should be something that goes into the, uh, uh, community outreach. They should know that that's available. And I think that they might, might like the alternative.
You're talking about what road now?
Yeah, we're talking about Crystal Hills Boulevard.
Going down the creek hill?
Yeah, where it goes down to the hill. It's plenty wide enough. I think it's like, uh, thirty some feet wide. So it's plenty wide enough to cut out a, uh, slow pokes, uh, uh, edge to it on the far western side. So that the only people that would be affected by that would be people coming uphill. And it's not difficult to stop a car coming up that hill, so, or make adjustments coming up the hill. And the, uh, on the other side for the bicyclists, the bicyclists are gonna go every bit as fast as the cars are. That's a, that, uh, that is already marked as a, uh, as a multi-use tra- a multi-use road for cars and cyclists. And the cyclists are gonna be hard on their brakes to beat, uh, not to go twenty miles an hour, which is the speed there. So we're not losing anything to do that. Um, except maybe a nice path that we would love, would some people would like to have down through that canyon. So. Yeah, I think you're right, Judy. I think, I think they made a good case. So I was hoping, I was really hoping Robin was gonna be here tonight and I sent her an email earlier today asking her to please make it.
Can I, would you entertain a procedural question, Tim?
Yeah, what?
Well, it's almost, well, I have six twenty-two. In the, in the event we, we don't have quorum in the meeting in the next ten minutes or so, I'm just looking at the calendar for December because it looks like the OSAC meeting for December is the day before Christmas Eve. And I didn't think we were gonna meet then. But I just, I'm just throwing it out if the, it, it, do you ever meet on another time when this happens? Agenda is pretty full.
We do have a full agenda. I would like to see us do that. I, I put something else off that I would, I think we need to, uh, vote on as well. And that's, um, uh, the, REMFIA has asked for more money this coming year. And, uh, that's something we need to talk a little bit about. And that's something that we need to, uh, present to, uh, city council at some point. So I would maybe like to see if I can get together commitments for a quorum for sometime a couple of weeks from now. And just reach out to people. I guess I'll have to do that for, to, through, uh, Gillian. I can do it one at a time to people.
Can, uh, Judith, you wanna suggest a date? I'm readily available. I'm good.
I, I would like to suggest either the, um, eighth or the fifteenth of December, but not the first, Monday, the first. Because, uh, that city council meeting on the thir- third is, starts at two. And we, yeah, it starts at two in the afternoon to five-thirty and then they feed us for half an hour and then the regular meeting starts at six.
Whoa, that's a marathon.
Yeah, it's a lot. It's, it's a lot. Um, so the, there'll be a lot, a big huge packet to digest before that. Just, but anyway, just the, the, um, yeah, the eighth or the fifteenth. I'm looking at my cellphone. I hope that's Monday.
The ninth is Monday and the.
Oh, I'm sorry. So yeah, I'm sorry. The ninth or the sixteenth?
Sixteenth is out.
Out, okay. Anybody, ever, anybody interested in the ninth of December?
I'm good. Let me take a look here.
This is a backup because hopefully Rob, Robin will jump on in a minute or two, but if she doesn't, I'm kind of worried if we don't meet one more time before January.
We do need to meet one more time. And actually that would be convenient if we could pull it off. But why don't we say the ninth as, uh, just a bogey? And if that falls out, we'll try something else. I'll, I'll try to organize something else. Let's try to do the ninth. Maybe we, maybe we can get Nancy Wilson on us and, and as an alternate and promoter to, uh, to, and Nancy herself can talk for an hour or so.
That's not the idea.
We'll get, we'll get that. She's a wealth of information, a wealth of information.
Okay. And then the other thing that was not discussed was whether we were gonna do something, a get-together in December.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you?
What, whether or not we're gonna do a get-together in December. Like the last two years. And I am offering up my house.
What days were.
I said it's a wreck anyway. We're entertaining non-stop, so why not?
Oh, how nice. How generous.
Of course.
What day do you wanna do that?
I am, uh, my, my plate is getting full fast, but I could do it. I could do it on, uh, uh, seventeenth. I could do it on the twelfth, twelfth through seventeenth.
What's the twelfth? What day is the twelfth?
Uh, Thursday. The seventeenth is a Tuesday.
Well, I'd like to avoid the twelfth if we could.
Okay.
Good.
Good.
So the twelfth? No, you will.
Be avoided.
Avoid.
I could do it on the seventeenth. That's a Tuesday.
Seventeenth?
Um, I will have counsel on.
Oh, that's right.
That's right.
I mean, you guys can't party without me. I know how you guys.
Party without you.
Esther was so fun.
What is the nine?
We're happy to get to Judy's this time.
I know.
Is the nineteenth too close to Christmas?
Uh, the, the twelfth works for me.
But it doesn't work for Dave.
It doesn't work for Dave though.
Sorry.
I can do the night. I can do the nineteen.
The nineteenth works. Dave?
Yes.
Okay, we've, we've got a. We've got a quorum of three.
Now, well, that's, you know, if you show up and if you don't, you snooze, you lose. What can we say?
Do you have a time in mind, Judy?
No.
Okay.
But, um, Thursday's a good day.
Determined. Okay.
I don't, wait. Well, what, what, Tim, what did you do last time? Six-thirty? Bring a dish to pass, blah, blah, blah?
Sounds good.
Six or six-thirty. It sounds great.
Let's say six and everybody will show up by six-thirty.
Right.
Okay. We gotta party.
Well, hopefully.
Josh, join us?
What's that? I'm sorry.
I said, are you gonna join us? On the nineteenth for a party?
The nineteenth, oh.
Oh, there's a fun group. And we can't say that we didn't get anything accomplished tonight.
Oh. I, I have a, I have another question if you won't mind. I don't know if Josh, maybe you know this or Tim. I am working my brain over from those two gals' comments about this homeless issue and trail. And what I wanna know is, um, if I want to, if I want to, um, uh, I don't know how to say this. If I wanted to propose a sign, some signage for, um, for, um, the trails we have that are highly used, but also, because I was thinking about this about where we hiked the other day, Josh, the Black Canyon. We saw those homeless camps. A sign that would say very clearly what the ordinance is about taking down homeless camps. I don't know if it's immediate. If we see it, you're too bad, so sad, is that we have to leave a twenty-four hour warning? Is, what is it so that we can?
What is the, uh, yeah, the, unfortunately, the, the, the rules on this are, are, that we have to get the sheriff's department, the police department to remove any homeless people.
No, I'm talking about camps. I'm talking about camps, not people.
Yeah, the problem is when you tear up the camps, you're tearing up people's property. And.
So if you post a sign saying no camping and then you say any campment will be removed due to this ordinance, because this is a no camping trail.
Okay, my, my experience on that, and that's all I can go from, is no, the police department wants you to, you to use, uh, see, click, fix, to report it. And that means I'm, I'm a little, uh, skeptical about that because of the amount of time it takes for them to respond to that. And, and that's a statement about the, uh, number of people that they have available to do that, really.
Can I comment on that? It's also, it's also quite a safety issue. I mean, I've volunteered to go clean up some of those camps and, you know, you wanna stay away from, you know, there's, there's needles, there's, there's draw, there's all sorts of really unsafe things, flammable devices, uh, you know, makeshift stove. So that's, that's, it's better left in the hands of the police.
I am not questioning that. But what I'm saying is, I guess, if it was clearly stated, whatever the policy is, if your camp is found, it will be, and reported, it will be removed. Not you get a warning and please pick up. It's, it will be, if that's what it is, and I'm hoping that's what it is, could we start thinking about some kind of signage like that posted on trails where that is going on? And, and, go ahead.
Let me, yeah, let me get over to someplace where I can find my contacts. And.
While you're looking, I hear, I hear Judy's question is, is, is there an appropriate sign? Is that appropriate to do? My question to follow up on that would be, do we have any sort of signage like that on any other trails or open space? I don't know that I'm aware of it, Judy.
We don't.
Neither. Okay, all right. But that's her question is what type of signage would be appropriate? That's what I'm hearing.
Because it seems to me if you don't have signage, people say, well, we didn't know that. But if you have a sign posted at the, uh, assuming it's one leg, like we were talking about the Rose property, if it's posted inside the start of the trail, um, top and bottom, in that case, or in a loop, it would be at the start of the loop. I mean, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I, I, I really have been thinking about what those two gals said. And I think it's appropriate to discuss this whole thing and say, we're, we're supposed to be maintaining these trails. What does maintaining mean? It means the trails are safe. Is it safe? I, I'm having issues with this. Cause I want kids to be able to go on those trails. I want cyclists to be safe. I want mothers with whatever babies and backpacks to be safe. And I'm not, I was, you know, their comments and then hiking the proposed, uh, Black Canyon Trail where we saw it. I was just like, this is not okay. It's, and what if some kids got into some of those needles? That's not good. And I think that is that part of, I know it's not physical, but it is part of being safe for, for, you know, for community people.
Judith Chandler, I would anticipate that Jeff Parker has probably been all over this issue for the council before. Do you know if there's any material we could reach out and, and grab so we don't reinvent that?
Well, homeless camps are illegal, right? So anytime you come along a homeless camp or you find something, um, like I'll give you an example. I was doing the creek walk cleanup a couple of weeks ago and found, uh, my, my, I was with my granddaughter and she went under the bridge over there by the creek. And I went to fetch her and found an entire tackle box full of drugs, needles.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, it was scary. So I alerted the police department and they, they came over and did their hazmat thing. I didn't touch it. So there, it's illegal. So all you have to do is report it. Um, and it is, it is cleaned up. The problem is, you know, as Tim alluded to, that it, it's not always immediate. And of course, once you clean it back, out, up, they're back. So I don't know. I mean, I wanna, I wanna say that signage would be effective, but with this population, they're, they're gonna come back regardless. They don't care how many signs there are. So it's an ongoing issue that is gonna require, um, lots of agency involvement to, to, to keep it clean. So I don't know. I don't know if that helps at all, but.
Does.
But wouldn't be, wouldn't it be helpful, for instance, in the bulletin to be printing that every week? Or, you know, getting that out on media to say, you see a camp, report it. Don't ignore it. You know, everybody complains.
Yeah.
The question is, how will those community folks know? They don't have to do anything other than report it.
Well, um, communications in the bulletin go through the PIO officer. And, um, I, I would defer to your chairperson, Tim, that if the board decides votes that you want something to be a community service notice, uh, either posted at Memorial Hall or in the, you know, in the Wichita Lot thing or in the bulletin that you can request that.
So that's something I think we should take up in the new year. I think it's really important.
Sorry about this. I'm, I'm.
I didn't mean to leave you speechless. No, sadly.
No, never mind. I was trying to find the, uh, police officer's name, uh, that we've dealt with before. Somebody that you can talk to that, I'll get that to you.
And do we, are we gonna put, my other question was, are we gonna put Mike from the fire department on the agenda somewhere quickly? Cause I don't want him to think, uh, we're not, we didn't mean what we said about fire mitigation. I think, I think we need to get going. It's Ja- I know it's only January, but it is January and there, summer's coming. And I think this is gonna take some time and I think we need to be a little more, um, you know, we're really interested. You said the first of the year, we got you on the, on the agenda or something.
Judy, I, I agree. Yeah.
Well, we've got, uh, our December, whatever it was, nineteenth.
That's a party. You need a January meeting.
Talking about January because we, he said, he said first of the year. He said he'd be ready. Okay. Guess what? I didn't forget.
And that's a nice courtesy notice. Give him six weeks or January twenty-second or whatever it is. Meeting.
Meeting to be January twentieth.
Well, the fourth, are we looking at fourth Monday as like the last week of January?
I'm sorry, you're right. Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
I think we got to start on that too.
Okay, um. Let's do, you're the connection, right, Judy? Um, so we're talking about the, the fourth Monday, Monday in January?
Mm-hmm. Can I call him and see? He has remembered?
Right now?
No, no, no. I think, no, I just kind of could I?
Judy's on it. She's got it.
Yeah, God, slow down, girl.
Do we need to do anything to prepare for this December fifth immunity meeting?
We have Andrea Sutilla now.
Ah, ah, okay.
I don't know if we have time to do the meeting, but.
No. No.
I have to jump up pretty soon.
Okay.
Man, four AM, we're out of here.
But you got some housekeeping done and that's important.
Yeah.
That's housekeeping done, yeah. And what was our day for uh, the December meeting?
The ninth.
The ninth, the ninth and the nineteenth.
Hey Andrea, can you hear me? This is Jim.
Yeah, hey, I can hear you for sure. Hello? Can you hear me?
I think uh. I think we lost the opportunity for a meeting. We've, we've just ran, ran the clock out for. Some people here, but uh, are you okay? Yeah, are you okay for meeting December ninth? Okay.
Instead of the twenty-third.
Ninth is good for me, better than the twenty-third.
Yay.
Done.
I'll buy a party on the nineteenth. Does that work too, Andrea?
Oh, uh, on the nineteenth?
Nineteenth looks good.
All right.
Yay.
Yeah.
Good thing you showed up.
Yeah, gosh, all right.
That's great.
So Tim said we messed up his house too much, so we're going to.
Don't listen to anybody. Okay, well, we, yeah, we got some housekeeping taken care of in a couple of dates. And that's great.
Okay.
Okay, um, was there anything else?
Is that a picture behind you someplace that you are right now?
Uh, no, I, I'm in Tucson. I just arrived. We drove down here, so.
Oh, boy. You're tired.
That's where I'm going to be tomorrow, California.
Oh, nice.
Boy, people love it there in the winter.
I mean, it's seventy-five.
Hard to take, right?
Yeah. All right, well, will you send out an email with both of those dates or will someone?
I will, um, I think I can do.
I think we should send out an email about the community outreach too, Tim.
Without a, yeah, with blind copies and doing all that sort of stuff. We can certainly do that. Okay. It's been fun.
Right.
We didn't have a meeting, we didn't have a uh, a, a meeting uh, that we started, so we don't have to adjourn. High five, everybody.
Good night, everyone. You liked that, Josh. You really liked that.
Good job.
Thank you.
Night.
Tim, do you know I just end the webinar for all?
Oh.
What I do.
I don't know. Close the window and go home.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.